Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Bates?
Here.
Cedeau?
Here.
Laura?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Thank you. If you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Pastor Don Whitaker representing the Mountain Valley Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we come to you tonight, we come with thankful hearts. We're thankful for the pleasure and the privilege of being born and living in this great nation. Lord, we thank you that you are the author of liberty and the giver of life. I pray tonight that you'd have your hand in the proceedings that are to follow. Lord, give your wisdom and direction to each of these leaders of our community. We thank you for them. We thank you for their dedication. I pray that you'd guide and direct, that everything done tonight would honor and glorify you as one nation under God. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number three is the consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the following meetings: work session meeting of September 11, 2025, clarification and regular city council meetings of September 4, September 18, and October 2, 2025, and special city council meeting of November 25, 2025. B, material claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of November 16 through 30, 2025. C, construction board of appeals and review reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Robert Jensen to continue serving as a member of the construction board of appeals and review, representing the gas and mechanical trades. Robert's term will begin December 31, 2025, and expire December 31, 2027. D, golf advisory committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of DJ Mills to continue serving as a member of the golf advisories committee. DJ's term will begin December 16, 2025, and expire December 16, 2028. E, Pocatello Regional Commission reappointment. Pocatello Regional Airport Commission reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Patricia Francisco to continue serving as a member of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Patricia's term will begin December 8, 2025, and expire December 8, 2027. F, city council decision, short plat approval for Titan Center Right-of-Way subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision, approving a short plat for Titan Center Right-of-Way subdivision, which subdivides approximately 1.47 acres of parcel RPC PP 107205 into two lots, subject to conditions. And I'm sure everybody knows where that... That is, it's a great description. Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am?
Council president, I'm sorry.
That's a new one. I'm just kidding.
It's been a long week for me.
It has been. I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through F as outlined in agenda item number three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by council president, not ma'am, Lurick, and council member Cedeau. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Here, yes. Sorry. It has been a long week.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is the proclamation. We're going to see how this proclamation goes. Council President Lurick is going to read this proclamation.
Getting ready. Okay. Whereas, Zonta International is a leading global organization of professionals with more than 29,000 members in 63 countries, working together to make gender equality a worldwide reality for women and girls. And whereas, Zonta International has contributed to achieve a world free of violence against women and girls for more than 100 years, and since 2012 continues to raise awareness of crimes of violence against women and girls through their yearly Zonta Says No to Violence campaign for 16 consecutive days from November 25 through December 10. And whereas, the World Health Organization estimates that 1 in 3 women worldwide have experienced physical and/or sexual violence, and whereas, more than 650 million women alive today were married as children, and 12 million girls are married before the age of 18 each year, and whereas, the crime of violence against women and girls continues to be the most prevalent human rights violation and a global epidemic due to systemic use of physical, emotional, verbal, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse. Such crimes do not know any national or cultural barriers and affect millions of women and girls of all races and socioeconomic backgrounds in peacetime and conflict. And whereas, Zonta International envisions and continues to strive for a world where every woman is able to achieve her full potential, have access to all resources, is treated with dignity and respect, and is represented on an equal basis with men. And now, therefore, I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim December 4, 2025, to be Zonta Says No to Violence Against Women Day in Pocatello, and encourage all residents to practice and promote gender equality, sorry, to advocate for survivors of gender-based violence, and to act in service on their behalf.
May I ask somebody to take a picture? You have it. You guys, please.
Council, they'd like you to stand up.
You're going to stand. I'm going to go ahead.
I'm not council. I'm not council.
I know.
All ladies, I can say that, right?
All right. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Do you want more?
Do you want more? I can do more.
Do you need more?
Oh, let me get one to close.
Oh, I'll get that, too.
I was just going to say, I did last day.
I'm allowed.
Molly, do you want to say anything?
Lady, you are all ladies, I can say that, right?
Thank you, council, for standing up there. Oh, yes, please say something to us.
I was asked if I wanted to talk, and I can't pass that up.
That's true.
Mayor and council, on behalf of Zonta of Pocatello, I am the president, Molly Becaris, and I would like to thank you all for recognizing this day for us. We, obviously, maybe you notice year over year, our club is being recognized all over the United States for the growth that we're having. And I'm really excited about that, and to see all the great things that we're doing during our 16 days, if you would like. On our social media pages, we're posting all of the places that we're going and dropping off hygiene items for quite a lot of our social services in the area, and we're glad that we can contribute that. So, thank you again for recognizing us tonight.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item five is the calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. December 11, 9:00 a.m. will be a city council work session. December 18, 5:30 p.m. council clarification meeting. 6:00 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. Due to the New Year's holiday, city council meetings scheduled for January 1, 2026 have been canceled, and a special city council meetings have been scheduled for January 8, 2026. Other events: food for fines at Marshall Public Library through December 13. For every non-perishable food item donated, patrons can have their fines forgiven by $1. Please contact the library for more information. The Marshall Public Library has shortened out service hours in December. The hours are 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The library will be closed December 24 and 25 for the Christmas holiday. Regular hours will return on January 2. Looking ahead, city offices will be closed December 25 for Christmas holiday and January 1 for the New Year's Day holiday. Garbage and recycle pickups will be delayed by one day. Community recreation center will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 24 and 25, and December 31 and January 1. City Creek Recreation Area gates will be closed to motorized access until approximately May 15, 2026. As a reminder, to please keep your sidewalks clear of snow and ice. When clearing sidewalks and driveways of snow, please do not place snow in the streets. It becomes a driving hazard. We'll move to agenda item number six. Appointment confirmation of Chief Financial Officer/City Treasurer. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Rich Morgan as Chief Financial Officer/City Treasurer effective December 8, 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointment confirmation of Chief Financial Officer and City Treasurer as outlined in agenda item number six.
Second.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Okay, we have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Council Member Cedeau. We have a couple questions, so let's go. Councilmember Bates, Councilmember Paulson, and Councilmember Mangum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, and Heather, I direct most of them.
Heather Buchanan, Human Resources Director.
Hi, Heather. How long has this position been open?
Since June.
Okay. And how many applicants did we have total?
25.
How many did we interview?
We offered seven phone interviews and conducted six. We offered three in-person interviews and conducted two.
Okay. Who conducted the interviews?
The interview panel was Mayor Blad, Jared Johnson, Ann Nichols, Tom Kirkman, and myself.
Okay. And did we have any other applicants that had experience in municipal finance?
We had three applicants that have experience in municipal finance.
Did any of those three have supervisory experience?
All three had supervisory experience.
Okay. And of those three applicants, did any of them have experience with a budget the size of the City of Pocatello?
One had a budget of over $100 million, I believe.
Okay. And Mr. Morgan, when did he submit his application?
November 13.
And what was the dates of his interviews?
I think the 17th and the 20th.
That's what you told me earlier, so that's correct.
That's on my phone. I didn't bring that up.
That's okay. And then finally, it's public knowledge that there's potential conflict of interest with Mr. Morgan's spouse being employed at Deaton and Company. If Mr. Morgan were confirmed as our CFO, how would we address potential conflicts of interest?
So, we did an RFP, and we accepted that in March of '24 with Deaton. It was a five-year proposal. Deaton has internal controls that will make sure there's a separation of his family member away from the City of Pocatello audit, so they will not be involved in that.
Okay. I may have further questions, Mr. Mayor, but I'll allow Councilmembers Paulson and...
Councilmember Paulson?
My question was conflict of interest. Thank you for answering.
Okay.
Councilmember Mangum?
Mine was the same, but the internal controller in which you're speaking, it's the same process that they use for when they do the audit for Chubak also, correct?
That is correct. Deaton is also Chubak's auditor.
So, it wouldn't be something that...
It would not be an audit. They already have a measure in place to take care of this type of situation.
Okay. Thank you.
The background music, perfect. Is that it?
Any other questions?
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Mayor. Are you okay if I just make a statement?
You sure can. Is there any questions on this end? Sure.
Okay. I do believe it's important that this is an issue that is obviously controversial, this appointment is. That's not to say that it's right or wrong, that's just to say that it's controversial. And I want to just share a few of my concerns and explain the reasoning for my vote tonight. And I think it's important that when things are controversial, we explain as city leaders why we're making the decisions that we are. I'm uncomfortable with the timing of this appointment, and I think that's at the heart of most individuals that have spoken to me that are concerned, is the timing of it. My concern with the timing is what the public perception, what that timing does for the public perception for Mr. Morgan. I want him to be successful if he's appointed, and I don't want the timing of his appointment to overshadow his qualifications as a candidate. I've had the opportunity to speak with individuals in the City of Chubak, including Mayor-elect Birch, who have worked with Mr. Morgan, and all of them had positive things to say about him. All of them said that he was exceptionally qualified and performed the duties of his position as the CFO of Chubak very well. And I think it's important for that to be stated publicly. I also want to address something that I think is an issue that extends beyond this appointment, and that is, I think we, as a community, have gotten into being a bit of a mayor-centered culture. And we have to recognize that this is an appointed position. The CFO works for all of the city, not just the mayor. He reports to all of us. If Mr. Morgan, at any point, we were to say we no longer want Mr. Morgan as our CFO, that's not a decision for just the mayor, that's a decision for the mayor and the council. So, this is as much or more the council's decision as it is the mayor's. Finally, I was so thrilled to hear so many good things about Mr. Morgan, including from Mayor-elect Birch. And I hope, Mr. Morgan, if you're confirmed tonight, that your good reputation with the City of Chubak will help foster a more positive and collaborative relationship, a more positive and collaborative partnership between us and our neighbor city of Chubak. I think we have great opportunities to work well together, and I hope you can be a part of that. And I just want to express personally my appreciation to Bonnie and Chantel, and all of the finance department, for what they've done over the last six months without a CFO. I think they've done an admirable job. We've made some significant changes, even without a CFO, positive changes, in my opinion. And I just think it's wholly appropriate for us to recognize that even without a CFO, our city has continued to move forward in positive ways, and Bonnie and Chantel are an integral part of that.
Can I just, before Hayden says anything, I... Oh, yeah, you don't have anything. That was a question, sorry, I didn't cross this off there. I want to reiterate what you said, and Bonnie has acted as the acting CFO and done an absolutely phenomenal job. And I'd be remiss if we didn't thank her for it and what she's done with that department that was torn apart, and she's done an incredible job. And so, a very public thank you to Bonnie for doing that. Oh, Councilmember Nichols?
Sure, I'd like to make a comment. So, we have a highly qualified applicant with municipal finance experience. I'm not sure we could find a better fit, and I think we should get him hired and let him get on with his job as soon as possible.
Okay. Linda?
I also...
Council President?
I agree with what you said and with what you said. I think this is a real opportunity that we've actually been struggling with for not just the last six months, but for several years, to find somebody that has the municipal experience that we need. So, this was an amazing opportunity for us, and to have somebody with the experience and is ready to go. But I also really want to thank the finance department and Bonnie in particular for everything they've done to just step up and do the work and cover it and do it well during a time when we didn't have a CFO. So, that is, they've done an amazing job, even being on the investment and audit committee. I always get that backwards. I think it's audit and investment committee. Just being able to sort of get through those committee meetings without the CFO is sort of the chair of the committee, and so they've just done a phenomenal job of getting us through this difficult period, and I would like to recognize them, too, and thank them.
Very appropriate. Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Cedeau. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Rich, you're here. Would you like to say anything at all, or...
You're going to give me the mic? Uh-oh.
This was obviously a mistake, having you cut off the mic.
No. I'll be really quick. I agree with you. I work for the council. You guys hold the purse strings, and I am excited to get to know you and your vision and help the team at the City of Chubak, or the City of Pocatello. I knew I was going to do that. The City of Pocatello. Implement that vision. I appreciate the opportunity, I really do. I've heard great things about the finance department. They're dedicated, and I'm excited to join the team. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, should we clap?
I wanted to.
Let's do it.
We're all scared to start back.
I know. Well, I've put a stop to that a lot, so... All right, thank you, and congratulations. We'll move to agenda item number seven is public hearing zoning map amendment 203 Warren Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a request from Brandy Dyer of Treehouse Daycare and Preschool to rezone property located at 203 Warren Avenue from residential medium-density single-family RMS to residential commercial-professional RCP. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the application following a public hearing held November 12, 2025. I declare the public hearing opened. Council, has there been any expertise, communication on this agenda item? Okay, then our applicant.
She's here.
There you are.
Judge me, I'm very nervous. They made fun of me last time.
That's okay.
Yeah, so like you've said, Mayor, welcome everyone. We want to rezone. We've been a daycare for 25 years, and we've had a occupation, or a condition occupation permit to be a daycare. It used to be a church, I believe. And so, yeah, I'd like to move forward, and with that, I'm hoping to not only help my center, you know, families are struggling, so I want to keep prices lower by doing that, offering family gatherings, classes there as well. So, in order to do that, I'll...
I don't want to interrupt you, but I got to. Could you please introduce who you are for the people watching?
Yeah, I knew I was going to get nervous. Brandy Dyer. I'm owner of the Treehouse Daycare and Preschool. So, but yeah, so I really am hoping to rezone to offer more opportunities for the community. Should I redo it all over again?
That's right.
I might struggle.
No, you're good.
Good.
Questions, council? We have a Councilmember Nichols.
So, with this proposed rezone, what type of, what different type of activities would you propose?
Yeah. So, it used to be an old church, so we have a sanctuary that's our multipurpose room, so I want to utilize that and offer a party room for parents and just a family gathering, same idea. We are set up to run as the daycare, so we have the facility fence and all of that. So, just kind of to keep it along those lines, craft classes for kids, just family-oriented businesses in that upper, while keeping the daycare its own area the best we can. It'll be after-hours as the plan weekends, so utilizing as much as we can.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Any other questions for Brandy, while she's up here? Okay, don't go far, you might have to argue, rebut any concerns there.
Leave the podium, Phil.
Steph?
Councilmember Becky Bab, planning manager. The application before you is to rezone a parcel from residential medium-density single-family to residential commercial-professional. This application does align with our comprehensive plan, future land use map. As the applicant stated, this daycare has been in existence since 1999, since most of the criteria relate to compatibility with surrounding uses, existing utilities, and the like. We, staff finds the application is appropriate and does match the future land use map. The Planning and Zoning Commission also held a public hearing on November 12 and recommended that this council approve this application.
Questions, council? Okay. Thank you. Then, oh, before you leave, have we had any correspondence the city council has not seen in your office?
No. All of the communication that we've received was included in your packet.
Thank you, Becky. Madam Clerk, have we received any that we have not seen?
Nothing additional.
Okay, thank you. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application, any testimony uncommitted to the application, any testimony opposed to the application. You don't have to rebut anything if you don't want to. With that, then, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the zoning map amendment for 203 Warren Avenue from residential medium-density single-family to residential commercial-professional.
Yeah, suck it. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Paulson and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Super. Thank you. Agenda item eight, memorandum of understanding Southeast Idaho Public Health public pool inspections. Council may wish to approve a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with Southeast Idaho Public Health provided to provide inspections of City of Pocatello swimming pools and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the memorandum of understanding with Southeast Idaho Public Health regarding the public pool inspections as outlined in agenda item number eight, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Councilmember Cedeau. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Laura?
Yes.
Cedeau?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, airport lease agreement and resolution, ZR2 LLC. Council may wish to rescind the previously approved lease with Steve Peterson, approved on September 4, 2025, and adopt a resolution and approve a lease agreement with the city and ZR2 LLC for approximately 12 acres of property upon which ZR2 will own and sublease a light industrial manufacturing facility and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. The lease agreement will be for a 30-year term and at a rental rate of $30,000 per year, to be increased annually according to the CPI, with full rate review in 2031, and five years, every five years thereafter, with a maximum increase of 5% plus CPI. for design, bidding, construction, and administration of a grant administration of utility installation at the new taxi lane for hangar development and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the project will be fully funded by state and grant funds.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 11 as outlined and authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Council President Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Professional Service Agreement Work Order Airport. Counsel may wish to approve a work order with Ardura to in the amount of $138,786.05 for design, bidding, construction, and administration of a grant administration of utility installation at the new taxi lane for hangar development and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the project will be fully funded by state and grant funds.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 11 as outlined and authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham and a second by Council President Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 11, Professional Service Agreement Work Order Airport. Counsel may wish to approve a work order with Ardura to in the amount of $138,786.05 for design, bidding, construction, and administration of a grant administration of utility installation at the new taxi lane for hangar development and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. Funding for the project will be fully funded by state and grant funds.
Mayor?
Yes?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 11 as outlined and authorizing the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Paulson and a second by Councilmember Cheatham. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 12, Task Order Number 3 for Indian Hills Forest Main Final Design Project Water Pollution Control. Counsel may wish to approve Task Order Number 3 with consor engine in the amount of $823,018 to complete the final design of the Indian Hills Forest Main project and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents subject to legal department review. Funds for the project are available in the WPC FY26, 2026 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Nichols?
I move to approve Agenda Item Number 12 as listed.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Nichols and a second by Council President Lurick. Aubriana, could you please call the roll?
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bates?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 13, Bid Acceptance and Contract for Wildfire Fuels Mitigation Project for Pocatello West Bench. Counsel may wish to approve the following requests regarding the Wildfires Fuels Mitigation Project for Pocatello West Bench. A, accept the low-responsive bid received on November 7, 2025, from State and Forestry in the amount of $209,401.50 for option 10, and if accepted, B, authorize an agreement between the City of Pocatello and State and Forestry in the amount of $209,401.50 for the wildfire fuels mitigation project and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents subject to legal department review. The project will be funded through the Phase 2 and Phase 3 Western State's Fire Managers' Fuel Mitigation Grants awarded to the city. The grant funding match has been approved in the FY26 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move that we approve the bid acceptance, or accept the bid, and contract for wildfire fuels mitigation project for Pocatello's West Bench as outlined in Items A and B of Agenda